I like to call this October 13th Council Work Session and regular council meeting to order. And let's remember all those who passed away during the month, and also let's remember Louis' brother-in-law, Vince Proci, who passed away the other day, and also one of the greatest historians ever, who's viewing us tonight and we couldn't make it because of his council meeting, Harold Mitchell. So let's remember all that in our prayers.
Yes, Ms. Guillenma, Guillenma Wulamina Verbal.
Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, unuttered, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phil, you want to do a roll call, please? Mr. Pezzin?
Here.
Ms. Cullen?
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Cousins?
Here.
Ms. Figuerer?
Here.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Petroci?
Here.
Mr. DeGisele?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up the meeting to public participation. So anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to podium and state their name and address. Anybody?
Ryan Young. My name is Ryan Young, and I live at 240 McKinley Street. So I come in front of you guys today. I've lived in the borough for 15 years. My family's lived in the borough their entire lives, and you know, my grandparents and everything. And recently, I had an issue with the zoning department. Basically, I put some rubber mulch down in my backyard, and a neighbor called that I'm having an issue with regardless. And throughout the process, they asked me for an architect's, like an architect to come through and give me a, like a, for the drainage property. And they stated that to prove whether it was impervious or pervious product. If it was impervious, I didn't need a permit or anything. And if it was pervious, then I needed, you know, to have this paperwork. So I contacted a few architects and surveyors and all types of, you know, people that would be able to get this done for me, one of which actually has a couple of land development opportunity or projects going on in the, in the borough right now. And basically, what he told me as is that there is no need for me to have, to have this paperwork. It is an impervious product. The borough actually uses the same product on all their playgrounds, that he would be more than likely to write me a letter stating these facts, except for the fact that he has these projects going on in the borough, and he wouldn't want the zoning department to give him any kind of guff about his projects, because he thinks that they were, they have, like I have a target on my back.
You do?
Yeah. So my one neighbor that, you know, it's, I'm not going to say his business, but you know, he works with the borough, he owns properties, landlord, he knows people. I mean, this guy put up, he put new concrete in that drains onto my property. I complained about it. Nothing's been done. He put a fence up with no permit, backwards against my property, nothing's been done. And now I'm getting kicked out of my house because of this, because we got a violation. And all I did was put this stuff down so my kids had a safe place to play.
I'm very disappointed from what I'm hearing from you right now, because first of all, mulch does not require any kind of permits or anything. I mean, if that's what you could put down, I wasn't there. One of our inspectors is here tonight for something else, so I'm going to try to have this resolved by 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Are you around?
I actually worked two hours away waiting.
Well, before you leave here, we're going to try to get this resolved.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right, just have a seat, and I'm going to call recess once we get through this couple things. Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room? So that ends public.
I want to share with the council and the public some of the things that I've noticed, that I've noticed while working at the borough my 15 years. Today would be my, I'm retired, today I'm considered disability, social security retired. We just closed our final case. I don't know if you guys got the final papers for trans, the deposition from the last court hearing, but I'll be speaking on that a little bit to share with you guys. Oh, I had, let me, hold on. I'm sorry, a little, I'm not used to speaking in public, so bear with me, please. I have a few things I want to share with you guys. You like, just.
Thank you.
Jose, can you just go to the podium and present your case to council, because I'm going to end this.
All right. Well, I'm there. I'd like to go back from the beginning when I first started working at the borough. I reported a Borough employee drinking on a job as supervisor many, many years ago. I went through the proper channels. I went to my, it was my supervisor, I'm not a vegetarian here. It was my supervisor, so I went to his supervisor. His supervisor, his supervisor, my supervisor, we spoke for a while, went back, followed up, spoke with Ralph, spoke with Dylan. I spoke with, I spoke with the top tier, and when I reported this employee drinking on a job, not only was he drinking on a job, he was driving around a Borough employee car through Bristol for years, even after I reported it. I'm the vice pres, I was vice president of Little League here in Bristol Borough. My responsibility comes first to the children, drunk driver driving around Bristol. Now, the chief is not able to do his job if you guys don't report it to the mayor, and the mayor reports it to the chief. I did the right thing, and for years, I was punished for doing the right thing, for years. When you guys, and I'm speaking, and I had much love, and I had relationships, people here, then in my own wedding, I invited to my own wedding, and I have relationship for many years. I have a family, don't deserve this, didn't deserve one bit of it. For years, I was threatened with my pension, I was threatened with my, my, my position, my job. I had to be 12 years vested, I was constantly reminded that I had to be 12 years vested or I'd lose my pension, my benefits. We have a moral responsibility, I did, sometimes when you do the right thing, you stand here alone, and that's what I'm doing right now. I did the right thing, and I'm not backing down off of it, and I was punished for it over and over and over. Money withheld from us, financial money, my wife had to get another part-time job because you messed around my money. Money, I should have been able to spend my time, I almost died. I almost died. I went 20 feet into a tank headfirst, hit my head, back, I'm not walking the same. Not one person bothered to call and see how I was doing. Counsel Johnson? Yes, he called, he checked on me. We didn't talk about this, because he wasn't able to talk to it, I guess, about it. We have teachers here, Greg, Lee, I hear you guys are great teachers. What would you tell one of your students if you teach, you were a teacher here in a borough, and one of the Borough employees runs over a student, kills one of your children or your grandchildren? What would you say then? What would you tell? Would you still back him up? Would you still cover up for him? I don't come here often, you guys know me. I have a reputation this town, I have, it's a good reputation, I'm not coming up here to lie to you guys. You guys voted him in, then you guys. Now, when you guys come to our doors, when it's time election year, I, I, I vote for you guys based on your morals and your values. Our children come first. My children will walk in the streets for my mother-in-law, who's legally blind, they can't see it, can't see a drunk driver. Protect my children. My children weren't even allowed to play in the alley in the streets. No one ever saw, they didn't see me falling, I think, I was forced. I'm here too, because it did, I was forced to work for the new owners of the Bucks County, of the sewer. I wasn't supposed to be there. The reason I was there is because them guys right there, over there, them guys, they didn't want Tommy. They didn't want my coworker. They didn't want my coworker to go over there and be drunk, get in an accident in one of those vehicles, God forbid, there were words that, God forbid, if they get in an accident and hurt someone or kill someone, the borough gets sued. Now, I'm a sewer operator for the DEP, we have to, we, for the DEP, it's like a licensed driver. You guys drive under the influence, you guys go to jail and get caught, right? If a sewer operator operates a sewer plant, DEP, just the same thing, they go to jail. The borough's responsible for that. What if the, the borough knows? What if the borough knew and, and, and one of our kids was killed? Then they come back to this council, and it was a cover-up. What do you say? Not the council, I am not, this, I want to make this clear, I am not accusing this council at all. I got, it's Ralph DeSefi, Dylan, James Dylan, Junior, Ralph Junior, their brother-in-law, John, what's his last, I can't say his name, his brother-in-law, Ralph's brother-in-law, the solicitor as well, knew, the Borough Solicitor knew, they talked with this employee.
You don't mean me, I assume? I haven't been here that long.
Who's that?
The solicitor.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not there yet, I'm not there yet. You know that, you just want, you know that. I'm not going to be bullied by no one. I don't fear nothing. You guys threaten my, not, sorry, I don't mean this council, the council members, none of you, I got nothing but love for you guys. Costly, you went after my family. Here's another thing, now think of this, we want a court case, then I want, now, because they can't mess around with my clients, what do they go after? What do they go after? My father. I'm a rental father, that's missing a piece of siding, it's a very typical, one piece that's been missing for 10, 15 years, I do all that. John Miller, the previous inspector, pointed it out, no big deal, told me about the spoken, it's not a safety issue, nothing. I get a $12,000 fine, I get a $12,000 fine for it, and I have, and then I get a sticker in front of all my neighbors, sticker posted on my door, arrest warrant for me, for citation. They don't call the cops, he didn't report, they don't report drunk drivers, they report a piece of siding missing off the top of the house. That's it, right? So it continues on, this is just the beginning, this is where retaliation goes, to cover that up, to cover it up, to cover that part of it, they forced me to go to, they forced me to go to the work for these people. And the way around, it's the last second, the engineer, the engineer was supposed to go, and the last second, he switched, they took the supervisor out of that position and demoted him, and demoted someone else in that position, because they didn't want represented, and motivated to drink, and try. I have no, I end up busting my butt and almost killed myself. I wasn't supposed to be there, I was forced. Now I have to deal with this. And now on top of it, instead of, one, one time, Azay, I'm sorry what happened to you. I'm sorry. You know, how you doing? How's your family doing? I have a family like you do, you guys do, don't you? All right? So from there, it goes on a little further. Now, the retaliation, I, I have, I, it's called an IME, you guys can see it on the paper, it's supposed to be independent evaluation, no relationships with any of the doctors, the doctor, with either part of it, defendant or public or, or making. By law, you can read it there, I gave it to you guys, by law, has to be independent, no relationship, this, this doctor, Ralph's brother-in-law, Ralph's brother-in-law, this is a connection from the beginning, gave me my physical here in the borough when I got hired. That's the first connection. Second connection is his brother-in-law, that's two, right? He hired me automatically, no, when I went to this doctor's IME, I sent you guys the email, I explained, I told you guys what happened in that, that, that meeting, how he hide, who, he was hiding who he was, denying that he ever lived in Bristol, denying that he had family, until I called him, until we figured out who he was. Turns out it's Monica's brother, Ralph DeSefi's brother-in-law. What are the odds? What are the odds? I mean, if it wasn't such a big deal, why was he hiding who he was? I don't have to go to that doctor, I don't have to go to any doctor out of one, and especially, I'm not going to my boss's doctor. So that's it. It continues on and on and on. Now, when you guys come knocking to our doors, and I'm talking about, you guys are all good people. When you guys come knocking at our doors and ask for our votes, we vote on you guys based on your morals and your values. That's what we vote on. Your children look different than my children. You guys now know that he allows this stuff to happen, that he attacks people. He's legally not allowed to have his brother-in-law, then he knows that. Now, if he's capable of getting his own brother-in-law to lie and risk his own career, what do you think he thinks about you guys? Hmm? What do you think? You think he's not going to turn on you? He was my coach. Every time I see him, oh, he's my coach. I had no, nothing against him, right? But this problem, I went and did the right thing, and I got tortured for it. Now, you guys have, you guys, we vote you guys in, we voted you guys in, and the people I voted, voted for, I do not regret. And I'm sure the people who voted for you guys don't regret it as well. But now the cat's out of the bag. Now, you know, you guys elected the president, the lead you guys, the lead you guys based on your morals. Remove him. Remove him. You guys, I can't remove, we, we as, we as a borough can't remove him, he has his own ward, he wins his election, you guys as a group, we will, um, elect him to that position. This town already, this town already said what it needed to say when they voted for the mayor. When they voted for the mayor, they said what they want to say. The majority of people in this town do not want him up there. Do not want him out there. And I've given all my support to everyone here. And it's not easy for me to be up there. You know, we have people.
Mr. Resado, we have other people that have things to present tonight, so if you can...
Mr. Petroci?
Why not?
Mr. Petroci, you're, you're, you own a business in this town, and I don't mean to attack you by no, I am not attacking you, I told you, nothing but respect for you. You own a business in this town. If you had one of your delivery drivers driving around, would you allow him to drink on the job? And if he found out he was drinking on the job, would you allow him to continue to drink on the job for years? No. This is what we have here. We pay the taxes, we the people, we come here.
How much, how much more do you have?
We the people.
Jose, how much more do you have?
Three minutes.
All right, because I want to wrap it up.
We the people, we the people, we the people, that's what it is, we the people, you're the government, and we entrust you with our children, our kids, our school, parents, parents who are watching this should be in fear that their leadership in this town allows drunk drivers to drive around, drunk driver, not drunk driver, drunk driver for years. You guys have a vote, you guys already, you can vote right now, a vote of no confidence, a vote of no confidence. That's what you said, because I, 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 you guys today, you guys are going to have, Lee, I, I see you guys, you guys are good people, man. You guys are good people. Don't cover up for someone else. He tried to take my head off. He tried to make me look like a fool by having his brother-in-law give that, that examination. Here's the best thing, he never even finished the examination, but he gave a report that he did. Once we found out who he was, we walked out, and he continued on. Then he gave a deposition on the 25th of February of 2025, which was a lie, I never finished the deposition, I never finished evaluation. And two, he never disclosed his relationship with the council president. They went all the way to, I had other IMEs also, independent evaluations, I had nothing to hide. They found me to be disabled. The only one that didn't find me to be disabled was, was the council president's brother-in-law, the mayor's uncle. The mayor's uncle.
Yes, he is.
Yep.
All right, so let me, I just want to tell you a couple things, because...
All right, hold on, real quick, real quick.
Go ahead.
When I walked out of here, last time I seen Ralph, you had something to say to me. What was it that you wanted to say to me?
I didn't say anything.
You didn't say anything, because I didn't allow you to say it, but you said, Jose, can I say something? I said, no. I'll give you an opportunity to say what you say, I was talking about your brother-in-law, about, about you, I asked you, I asked you to do me a favor and relate to your brother-in-law a bit, I appreciate the way I was treated by him and yourself. But next time, when I see him again, I'll show my appreciation.
Okay, so I just want to get something clear, because we are on TV and we're on tape. So you're accusing him...
Accusing who?
My brother-in-law.
Am I accusing him what?
Of trying to screw you.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, so I'm glad you got that on record.
Oh, yes, and you, and you, and Jim Dylan, and Junior.
So you really think an orthopedic surgeon is going to jeopardize his career...
Yeah.
...over you, which he has nothing to gain?
No, you're his brother-in-law.
And I have nothing.
You're the brother-in-law.
Well, what do we have to gain?
Why, how was he, it's supposed to be independent evaluation, was it accident that he showed up?
There's no reason to discuss.
No, sir, it's not.
You're 100% right.
Everyone has lies about...
And you really think that you would allow a guy that's drunk to drive our borough equipment?
You said no?
Absolutely not.
Look, I got...
Jose, anything else?
I, I have plenty of evidence, which I will present to you guys.
I'm not saying you're not, I'm not saying you're wrong, but...
I never text you, I never text him, I never sent you guys pictures and videos?
Yeah, you sent videos way after he retired.
Your ass, your ass, Ralph.
Well, I'm not going to get into this.
Ralph, I retired, I got hurt, and then two weeks later, he retired. So I'll give you that, Ralph, it's stated, it's stated.
All right, so we're done.
It's stated.
I'm not going, look, you got your own opinion.
Huh?
Nobody's going to change your opinion of anything, there's no reason for me to...
It's a fact, it's a fact.
That's, well, that's good.
It's a fact, it's a fact. You didn't leave a, look, put the camera towards Ralph, you didn't leave, I didn't tell you about a drunk driver driving around Bristol for years?
No.
Dylan, you? I never told you?
Never told me anything.
I didn't, Jim, I haven't told you?
Uh, maybe, maybe a couple, a few years ago, he came in and said that one of your employees was drinking on the job. I brought that employee and spoke, spoke with him, and to my knowledge, it ceased and they stopped drinking on the job. Now, I think he's been gone about a year, two years from now, two years, he's been gone two years, so, but anyhow, it was an incident.
It was an incident, Ralph? It wasn't, you're, you're making it seem so, we're talking years, we're talking...
All right, all right, okay.
I got, I jumped in a borough, I jumped in a borough truck, and there's beer bottles in a borough truck, beer bottles. I get fooled, though, Ralph, I've been in an accident. Who's going to get charged with DUI?
So the mayor wasn't even here during that course, so you're blaming him for something he wasn't even here for.
I'm not talking about, I am not talking, hold on, real quick, I'm, no, no, you accused me of something, you're not being able to answer.
You want to point the finger, that's fine.
I didn't accuse him, I didn't accuse you of something, you shouldn't hear that.
When you forget, let's go back when you forget, I just, you know, this isn't going to do anything.
Because you forget a phone call, a text, and you called me, and you talked to me on video, but what else?
You got anything else, because I'm done. You're, we're not going to agree on anything, but...
Because Ralph, here, see, here's the thing, you're, you're, you're here.
Take your three minutes, Ralph.
You're here, are you with me, Ralph?
All right.
This meeting, this meeting, I'm here to speak.
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? That ends public participation.
I come to this meeting, I come to this meeting, I have a right to address you guys.
Anybody on this side of the room want to speak? That ends public participation. Have a good night.
So...
All right.
Somebody else can, I don't know.
What do you mean, it's not over?
It's not over.
So what do you want to do about it?
I'm going to come in here, and I'm going to keep addressing this council, and I'm going to keep doing what needs to be done for our kids, that's it, all right?
For your kids, why?
Yeah, my kids.
What are we doing to your kids?
What, you now drunk drivers driving around the borough? That's my kids, that's my responsibility, that's my responsibility as a parent, I got morals, now some of us do that.
All right, Lorraine, what do you have?
I'd like to ask the solicitor about what could be done about an ordinance for people coming to our events with snakes around their necks and, and other animals that are dangerous. I would like to see what we could do about that.
All right, I'll look into it and get back to council.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I just wanted to talk mainly about Borough Rec. The Borough Rec Board is going under a reorganization, and there's going to be some things that are, that are some moving parts, but just to inform the parents out there that are involved in Rec, if you notice any changes coming in the future, they are deliberate. And what I mean by that is, it was our feeling as a council that the Borough Rec Board was certainly putting in the energy, putting in the effort, but that there was a little, we were just trying to, we were fighting off a little more than we can chew as a board. So what we advised the Rec Board on is that we would really like to scale things back in the sense of the way we communicate, and that we want to focus on the core sports of flag football, basketball, soccer, obviously, baseball has a slightly independent kind of structure to it, but we will be working with them as well. But we are really zeroing in on just the core sports, and then we're going to dial everything else back. We're going to get those core sports going, we're going to get those core sports going really, really well. I think we're in a really good place so far, but we all could use a little bit better organization, we're looking into some registration systems recommended by some people from Bristol Township that might professionalize and streamline that a little bit. And then also, we've been having a number of private conversations, and I know the council president, something you wanted to talk about more, but in a small borough like ours, we do have a bit of advantage compared to some other places in that there are places for our kids to practice, but I think we all want to see those facilities improve. And Otter Street is something we really have our eye on. I know we've mentioned this before, but I think I can say confidently that this council is interested in making a lot of improvements, and Otter Street, I think, would be a great place to start, because one of the things is practice time, and if we did Otter Street the way that we think it should be done and added bikes to it, that would almost double the amount of practice time. that would, uh, almost double the amount of practice time that we get. So, I know that the council president has mentioned along with us, members of the board as well as council, that that is a priority and it's one that we wanna get going, so, we're gonna really start digging into that in the near future. That's all I have.
Uh, not to hold you guys up, Larry, we have a check for you for, uh, we'd like to present, who has, Larry's check? Wanna come up, please? Larry?
Hello? Good, you're good. On behalf of the Bristol Borough Council, we would like to present with a check for historic Bristol Day, that always brings a lot of people into town, and we appreciate the work that you guys do. Promoting our town. There's a hand up. On behalf of Borough Council, um, I would like to, uh, give you this check that is a donation from the council to historic Bristol Day. Uh, we appreciate the work you guys put in and we, uh, hope you appreciate the partnership and the support that we always offer you as well.
We do, and, and on behalf of my co, co-ad, chair, Jesse, and the rest of the committee, thank you, this will contribute to the success of the day.
Great.
Weather is gonna look good, and we hope for another ten thousand people there.
Thank you, we appreciate the, the partnership and we always appreciate and, and value supporting you like you support us.
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Matt, you wanna go to the podium, so we don't hold you up any longer? I apologize for that.
Good evening, Matt McHugh, attorney for River Group Equities, uh, here to present a concept plan for twenty-two oh seven Radcliffe Street, um, to discuss a potential self-storage, indoor self-storage facility with Borough Council. I think everybody is familiar with the property, it's the former Simon and Schuster Building, uh, twenty-three acre parcel that has a six-hundred thousand square foot warehouse building. Property's own light industrial, is currently used as a warehouse. And the portion that we're talking about, uh, is the, a portion of the two-story building that is directly across, uh, from the Radcliffe Court townhome. So, I, I passed up earlier, uh, before you all came out, a couple of plans, um, showing, there's two eleven-by-seventeen plans, uh, and then also, a set of color renderings would show the improvements, and I'll put these up on the screen as well. Um, so the first larger one just shows, uh, a general idea of where the proposed, uh, indoor self-storage facility would be within the larger, uh, overall, uh, industrial building. And then, there's a zoomed-in version, which shows, uh, the proposal to redevelop approximately fifty-seven thousand square feet of the existing warehouse space in the two-story building, uh, as an indoor self-storage facility with an accessory, uh, office and retail component. So you'll see, um, fifty-six thousand square feet of that would be indoor self-storage, a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-two units. Um, those units are primarily in size five-by-ten, ten-by-ten, ten-by-fifteen, or ten-by-twenty. Um, they would be shown in the configuration that you see here, uh, various rows of different-sized facilities. Uh, those are about generally eight feet in height, uh, and individually rented out to customers. And then down here in the bottom right of the plan, is an existing office that would be turned into an office, uh, for the self-storage facility where they would be able to enter into contracts with individuals who are renting, uh, as well as, uh, the retail sale of moving boxes, packing supplies, locks. And they'd also like to do a package drop-off, uh, for Amazon, FedEx, UPS, where residents are able to come and pick up or drop off their packages, uh, that are on their way out. Showing, just looking at the, some of the renderings from the beginning, uh, this shows the existing, this was the two-story building, first in your packet.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Just so, cause I know, and I've seen the plans, I'm an accountant for that word, and I, I know mostly what you're talking about.
Sure.
But I feel like a lot of people who are familiar with town might know, not know exactly where on that building you're talking about.
Sure.
So is, is the, is that right next to the Radcliffe Cafe, the, the, the white part, is that right next to the little restaurant on the, on the left?
Correct, yes, so you're, so as soon as it goes from one-story to two-story, we're talking the entire two-story front portion of the building.
Okay. Is next to Radcliffe?
Yes, correct, correct, yep.
So is it part of total warehouse? It's part of it.
It's part of the existing warehouse building, yeah, so-
How far will that, um, renovation go down the building?
Down Radcliffe, yeah.
Go, down Radcliffe.
Like, will it do the whole building?
Well, so that the, um, the self-storage facility is only gonna be in the two-story portion, but the facade renovations-
Is for the whole building?
Would go through the length of the entire Radcliffe.
How about up the side, too?
We could, I mean, we're looking at, that's what we're here to get some feedback on.
When you come down Green Lane, okay, and you're turning onto Radcliffe, it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
I was, I would be hoping that you would also take care of that as well.
And that's what we're here to discuss and get some feedback from council, I mean, we're, as part of this project, we're gonna be redoing the entire building from a facade perspective.
So I did notice that the color on the side of the building is like a, is sort of similar to that charcoal color that you have there, so I don't know if that was their first thought.
This is just conceptual, um, had an architect put together renderings and bring it to you guys for feedback.
Okay.
Um, we, we wanna make it look sort of modern, uh, the glass feel for the, for the self-storage portion is important, just to provide that kind of visual, uh, opening of the retail portion, but then as you go along, this is still the, this is still be the self-storage portion, but then as you go along Radcliffe, yeah, you would go all the, updating of the, the facade would go the entire length of that building. We're showing some foundation plannings.
That's very important, because there's new homes there, and I think, you know, it needs a-
And that was, when we met with, with staff, that was something that was expressed to us, uh, almost immediately was. In order for this project to be any type of success, we've gotta improve the visual, uh, depiction of the entire length of the building. So, uh, my clients are very well aware of that, they're willing to undertake those improvements, so. They think obviously the self-storage portion looks nice, but then continue that through the length of Radcliffe and other portions of the building.
Will you be repainting as well the parking lots?
So, some of that's gonna be dependent upon Pen, what Pendot has to say, cause it's in the Pendot right away.
Yeah.
But at a minimum, we're doing the building, we're looking into foundation plannings, it's gonna get cleaned up, so have a more-
And you will do the flowers, the whole bit?
Subject to what Pendot's gonna allow us to do, but we understand that the borough wants some sort of-
We want it to look-
Look nice, right? Uh, and whether that's planting, plantings, uh, plant or boxes, something, we're gonna come up with, we're showing, uh, plannings right now, but it's sort of gonna be a collaborative effort as we work through the process.
I also wanna, uh, talk about, you know, there won't be cars going in and out, like, it's not gonna be a lot of cars, random.
No, so-
I wanna make sure that people understand that, because there are entrances to the new places right there.
Sure, yeah, so self, one of the things, uh, kind of driving motivators of why self-storages are, are, are good developments in certain areas is cause they really are a low-traffic generator. Um, we had a traffic engineers in the process of preparing a report, but they're using the, the, the standard data, um, you're talking about a hundred new trips per, all day, period, that's fifty cars in, fifty cars out throughout the course of the day. That would be the entire traffic that would generally be generated from that type of site. It's really minimal compared to any other use, even the existing warehouse use.
That's the maximum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, really what you have from a practical standpoint, you don't have people coming in and visiting your facility every day. Um, you're looking at really people dropping their stuff off, and then they come and pick it up when they're ready to take it out or if they need something. And then even the, the package drop-off, that's a, a real quick, you know, somebody already on the road, they're gonna drop their package off, they'll be in for two minutes, drop it off, leave, and they're gone. So, it, we don't anticipate, and, and our experience, uh, clients operate a similar facility in New Jersey, and I personally have done a number of these facilities throughout the area, they are not significant traffic generators, you're not gonna see a lot of cars coming out of them.
So, it's, what is it, a FedEx or now?
No, they have a, a package drop-off for FedEx, UPS, Amazon.
You would have all of that right there.
They would have it in the office, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, I think it's a, a nice amenity for residents, um, something, especially for the town and express street, you gotta, you know, you know-
I know a lot of businesses in town, maybe they might miss it and keep-
Yep, or you have to drop off your, you know, your Amazon return or whatever it may be, that, they would like to have the opportunity to have that access.
Basically, you wanna know if council is against this or not?
We would like, yeah, we would like-
Some feedback.
Some feedback and also understanding the process, we would like, you know, the, the zoning doesn't quite match up for the type of use, so we would, if you're, if you, you know, accept the use, we'd like to be able to work with your solicitor on crafting an amendment, yes sir.
I have a question, on your, uh, drawing A two, it's titled Proposed Ramps, but when I look at it, on A two, it's titled Proposed Ramps, but I don't see any proposals, some ramps here.
I don't know why the architect labeled that, uh, that's just meant to show the location of the proposed facility within the larger building. I don't, I'm not aware of any particular ramps.
There's no ramps, we're not-
Other than there's an ADA ramp associated with the access, which I can show you here.
I see that on A one, right, ramp up, it says in front of the existing proposed office.
Yeah, that's, that's right here, um, that's already an existing ramp at that, at that location.
That's what I mean, I-
It would be improved, but it's provide ADA, no.
I was just a little confused when they're saying proposed ramps, and I don't see ramps on here.
Yeah, I, I'll have to ask the architect, but there's no, no, no ramps, from my knowledge of the-
We need that cleared up.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, my, I, I know you're looking for some feedback, Lorraine and I are the council, everyone's obviously entitled to anything, but Lorraine and I represent that part of town. Um, I think it's a, a great improvement from, for the facade point of view, I also think that it might actually mitigate some of our concerns about trucks, uh, because trucking down Green Lane is an absolute nightmare at this point in time for the people that live there and for the people that live on Radcliffe Street. I don't think there's a huge amount of, of truck, truck traffic that is going to this facility right now. Certainly more than a year's gone by, but it was a, was a deserted island for a while, so. Naturally, you're gonna get a little bit of that, but I think anything that improves this facade applies a practical use for it like this, and is not gonna have tractor-trailers in and out all day long, I think is, is an improvement.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
That's my thinking.
Yeah, you're talking mostly associated with the storage is gonna be passenger vehicles, SUVs, maybe you get a U-Haul truck.
Right.
Um, but you're not talking any, certainly no tractor-trailers associated with that aspect.
And it has, it's come a long way and, and, and we think that the people that have bought the building and have done what they've done are slowly, truly making it a lot better. Um, but without a doubt, that facade, a commitment to that facade improvement, I think would strengthen that case a whole lot.
Yeah, and like I said, this is intended to be step one of a larger collective process, we put something on paper to show you, um, but we, it's, as long as there's support, we're here to kind of work through this, understand what the borough wants, uh, from a visibility perspective, and incorporate it into use, so, we're happy to start that.
If you got the go-ahead, what's your, what's your timeline?
Um, it's gonna depend on how quickly we work through some of the details, I mean, I think the devil's in the details with this stuff. Um, understanding, I mean, I understand the, you know, the facade is very important, what kind of plannings we can do there. So we've already engaged a traffic engineer, they're looking at the Pendot aspect of those things.
But are you ready to go, like, if, if-
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
They got a lot of stuff. It'll require some, some work with the staff to get zoning ordinance and land development plans together, but-
Sure.
I don't know why you couldn't be in a position to break ground in the spring.
We would love that timeline.
Matt, how many, how many units are proposed, and is it two floors or just one floor?
One, it's only one floor, uh, it's in the two-story portion, but the units all be on the ground floor, there are two-hundred-and-eighty-two total units.
And then above it, would, would, was there any?
I believe it's over the stage.
That's still be the public storage there?
Yeah.
A lot of units.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, but I believe, they've done some market research and they believe there's a significant need here and they'll fill out pretty quickly.
I hope so.
I mean, don't forget, we're gonna be part of the process all the way through this.
Right, yes, absolutely.
We're not giving anybody, we're not voting on this tonight or anything.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you move forward, Melissa Jackson's here to talk about, if he's here, to talk about the borough. Alright. You wanna bring her up, Joe?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce our co-responder from our co-responder program, Melissa Jackson, tonight, um, with the work of the mayor, myself, and Melissa. Melissa did most of the work, give her the credit. Um, we're going to launch the Bucks County, um, Blue Envelope Program, and I'm gonna let Melissa have the honor. I put them all in your packets, and I think I distributed some a month or two ago.
Yeah, I have things.
But I'm gonna let Melissa have the honor to launch this program with the mayor and I by her side.
Hey, everybody. Uh, Bristol Borough will be launching the Blue Envelope Program, which is a policing initiative designed to enhance safety and communication between law enforcement officers and drivers with, on the autism spectrum during traffic stops. Um, being stopped by a police officer can make anyone anxious, before an individual with autism, the heightened situation, the flashing lights, and the sounds of radios and other noises can be even more overwhelming. The envelope is specifically marked to signal to police officers that the driver may have unique communication needs or react differently during their interaction. The individual or their family members will be provided, um, the blue-colored envelope that you have in your hand to store their essential documents, yes. Uh, such as driver's license, vehicle registration, inspection, and also a card for emergency contacts. The Blue Envelope Program is a powerful tool that will make a difference in the lives of people with autism and their families. It also expands our efforts to promote neurodiversity awareness throughout the borough and meet the needs of residents of all abilities. Envelopes can be picked up, um, in the police lobby Monday through Friday from eight AM to four PM. Uh, my information is also in the envelope, um, for individuals or families who need guidance or assistance, um, with getting anything started. Um, and, uh, the plan is to launch the program tonight, so we did put them in the lobby for tomorrow morning. Um, if you are, somebody you know who can benefit from the program, please consider participating and please spread the word. Um, also, we have also, uh, Bristol Borough Police Department has also partnered with Falls Township Police Department in the expansion of their project, DASH, um, which stands for Direct Appeal for Supporting Homelessness. Um, it's a community project that will help combat, combat the growing need for the unsheltered populations. Uh, the program was renamed after Bristol Borough's own Christopher Crant, um, who passed heroically on April third of this year, leaving behind a legacy of compassion and service. His memory continues to live on through the many lives he's touched and to carry forward his extraordinary work. All donations, including, but not limiting to, non-perishable food items, toiletries, socks, blankets, and gloves, uh, will benefit local public service organizations who provide services to those who support homeless individuals and the public. Every donation also helps continue Chris's mission of giving back to those in need in the community. Uh, the full donation list and more information can be found on Crime Watch, as well as the donation box, which is located in the public entry of the borough building. Um, that officially started October first and will go on till November third. Um, at this moment, I wanted to, to take a moment to thank the mayor, the council, and the police department for their continued support for the co-responder program. Together, we could support the residents of Bristol Borough and continue these programs and their initiatives.
Nice, and I like that it's in Spanish also.
So Melissa, I just wanna thank you personally, um, Joe, I know has worked alongside you with this program and just the co-responder program in general. Your department has done a phenomenal job in assisting our police department, and you are a tremendous resource, the, the borough and its residents, so thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Right, we're gonna have to talk to you tomorrow, okay? We got your phone number in our file, do we have this?
She'll get it.
Why don't you get, get it to Amber?
Why don't you let Maureen meet him outside?
Yeah.
You know, let him get your information, I don't want all the job, and we'll call you tomorrow and get this resolved.
Thank you so much.
Alright, you'll definitely hear from us tomorrow. You'll definitely hear from us tomorrow.
So Mr. Dillon asked me to come in today and speak about 1230 Pine Grove Street, Borough. On February 9th, 2009, the property was declared unfit for habitation by former Inspector John Miller. Property's been vacant ever since then. On December 15th, 2022, it was discovered that the rear of the property had become unsecured. A violation notice was sent to the property owner ordering the property be secured. The property owner applied for a permit for the securing of rear of the property on February 3rd, 2022. During the inspection on August 15th, the building inspector found that there was structural damage to the partition wall and it needed more work. A structural engineer needed to be brought in. There have been multiple engineering reports submitted to our license and inspections office by the property owner for the purpose of obtaining permits. All the engineering reports have been denied or not denied. All the permits for the, um, work has been denied because he doesn't follow through with all the proper paperwork. On March 11th, 2025, the vacant property review committee determined that the property located at 1230 Pine Grove Street is blighted pursuant to the authority set forth in the urban redevelopment law. On April 21st, 2025, Bristol Borough Planning Commission determined the property located at 1230 is blighted pursuant to the authority set forth in the urban redevelopment law. On June 9th, Resolution 2025-10 was approved declaring the property at 1230 Pine Grove Street blighted and directing the redevelopment authority of the county of Bucks to acquire that property by eminent domain in accordance with the urban redevelopment law. The next step would be for the borough to supply a letter to the RDA authorizing proceeding with acquisition of 1230 Pine Grove Street. I don't know if there's any other questions that I could possibly answer about the property?
No, I mean, you've been following this project quite some time.
Yeah, it's been going on since 2009.
So we appreciate the efforts that you and Mr. Dillon and the RDA, and I know Mr. Recetti has waited a few times as well, have come to, to get this to where it is, but I think it's in a place where needs to be doubled.
I'd like to thank Ray, when we first got the appraisal in for the redevelopment authority, the price was significantly higher. Appraisal, opinion of value was significantly higher than the $35,000, that's before you. And Ray went back at the, the RDA and the appraiser and gave it some significant information that brought down the value of that property significantly. So I'd like to thank Ray for being on topic.
Thank you, Ray.
Love you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
I don't have anything else on it. Thank you.
Your first meeting was interesting. Okay, we get back to council. Maureen, what do you have, anything?
Uh, no, I really don't have anything. I just want to extend my, again, my condolences to the Bearcall family for the loss of their mom and also to the Mitchner family. Harold was a very good friend of mine. So I, again, I just want to extend my condolences.
Okay, I just have one thing. Aqua has been replacing water mains into homes that have either lead or iron pipes as their main water source. And I had a couple of properties where they had to come out and I was a little concerned. But Henkels and McCoy was doing the work for Aqua and they recently did a, a job that I was there and it was, they were very efficient and they, not too much was disturbed outside and it was amazing how they got these copper, new copper lines in without, without destroying a lot of the things around it. Like I said, they were very efficient and everyone from, from Henkels and McCoy and Aqua were very, very cooperative. And the water was only off for about two hours and it was pretty good that you can change a water main in two hours. And they came back and finished the concrete the next day. So I just thought it was good because I know people are concerned when it happens and, you know, when they're going to do this work, but they were very, very efficient. And I understand the borough comes out and inspects it in about a week or two after the work's done. So it's good that we have our inspectors out also. That's all I have tonight.
Lee? Ready?
Yeah, I just want to let the, I'm sure the Bristol Borough residents know that this Wednesday at the Bucks County Technical School, as you all are aware, I do work for Tina Davis, and we're having a senior expo from 10 to 1. All are invited, all are welcome, doesn't matter if you live in the borough, the township, Marlesville, anywhere. So it has a lot of informational stuff for the elderly and it's a really nice event that we do once a year, so please come out and join us. That's it?
That's it, babe.
I just have a couple of things real quick, not to go back and start this whole thing over again, but anybody in a state of, not Bristol Borough, but anybody in a state of Pennsylvania that gets hurt on a job, it's coming on the workman's comp. Has nothing to do with the borough, has nothing to do with the employer, you go on workman's comp. You don't miss a paycheck. You get your pay every week until your case is settled, where you go out on disability, which we're going to do tonight. So this whole perception of what's going on is mind-boggling, but that's fine. I mean, everybody's got, is entitled to an opinion, but there's no advantage to me, the manager, to whoever, to try to take this whole thing and screw it up. We have nothing to do with it. We don't get involved in a workman's comp and we got cops out for three, four years. Jose's been out for four years. It's three years, it's a workman's comp issue.
Can I just add something to that? It's called an independent medical evaluation, as Mr. Rosado mentioned, because it's independent and it's hired by the insurance company, not the borough. So he referenced a fact and he made a statement that it was my uncle, yes, Dr. Petlo, who's the chief of orthopedic surgery for Jefferson Bucks, who does hundreds and hundreds of, hundreds and hundreds of IMEs.
We already heard you.
Hundreds and hundreds of IMEs by, he's hired by the insurance company. And I just wanted to clarify that. So, so to, so to think that, you know, the borough or him, who's a very successful surgeon, would jeopardize his career over one individual case is beyond ridiculous. And while we're at it, I just want to say that to think that myself or another member of this borough council or the chief would ignore any kind of drinking and driving in this town as a resident and a parent is another ridiculous statement. And I will go on the record of saying, for the time that I've been here as the mayor, and I can almost make the statement, but I'm not going to for this council, that nobody would tolerate or accept drinking and driving in America in this day and age, knowing about it. So that's all I'm going to say on that. I don't believe in trying to rationalize with somebody who's irrational, so I'm just going to let that go and that's all I have to say.
You had your say, didn't you? We heard you. All right, we're on. Joe, you have anything?
I just had a couple more things.
Um, we're going to go to you. You've nothing. AJ, have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things tonight. Number one, in conjunction with the fire department, we rolled out a new program last week and Ellen is also assisting us for all of our commercial, I don't know where to go with this, but all of our commercial buildings and apartment buildings to get emergency contact information updated. On the other side of what I do, the fire department, we run into businesses and buildings all the time where we can't get a hold of anybody. So the fire department has these as well, so if we go out for an alarm system and we catch one of the building owners, we can get some emergency contact information. It only benefits the businesses and the apartment buildings in this town for us to know who to get a hold of if we have an issue in the middle of the night when they're not there. So we can rectify the issue or secure the building. The second thing on that, if your building is equipped with a Knox box, it's a small black box on the front of the building with keys in it, please contact either the fire chief or myself so we can coordinate to come out and verify that the keys still work. We have run into quite a few incidents where we go into Knox box and the keys are either not there or they don't work because the business has changed over time. All my information and the chief's information is on the borough website. He'll send it down to me and we'll get that rectified as well. Lastly, to piggyback on the police department and Melissa, as, as many know, Christopher Cramp was a life member of America Hoos, hook and ladder, number two uptown. We've also partnered with Falls Township Police and we have a clothing bin there and there's a clothing bin down at the Google Hoos Fire Company number three at their bingo hall. If you cannot make it here to Borough Hall during business hours, you can drop items off at America Hoos, which is on Farragut Avenue next to the Little Wawa, where they are Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 6 to 9:00 PM. And then Tuesdays and Fridays, you can drop off at the Google Hoos during their bingo nights. And if you can't get a hold of anybody from the fire department or the police department, on the Bristol Borough Fire Association's Facebook page, Chief of the Consolidated Fire Company, Steve Reeves, who's also a Falls Township police officer, his email's there. He'll come out and get items if you want him to.
So AJ, let me clarify something. We are not accepting clothes and stuff here, correct?
There is a bin downstairs.
There is?
Yes. It's outside the police store, in the lobby.
I just don't want, I mean, we have enough going on with the girl, I mean, they don't have time to, something we should discuss.
They're going to take care of it.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
That it?
Uh, I believe that is all I have. I'm going to speak to Ray about it.
Any questions for AJ? What do you have?
I don't have a question for AJ, but I do have a comment. I think when I talk to some of the younger firefighters that I see throughout town, their energy and excitement is pretty contagious and it's pretty awesome. So I think yourself and Steve and the rest of the chiefs are doing a great job with, you know, this fire association and, you know, that's a testament to you guys bringing that energy and excitement and being really forward-thinking and coming together. So I just wanted to commend you for that. I just have a couple of things. One is Historic Bristol Day and the car show is this Saturday, October 18th. For those of you who are familiar, the Rackliff Street will be closed for the first couple blocks and lined with a tremendous amount of vendors. There'll be food trucks down by the river. The car show, I believe, is at Snyder Girardi, is that correct? Same place as it was before? So please come out to Historic Bristol Day this upcoming Saturday. I want to commend this council on negotiating with the chief on a new contract. You have done a phenomenal job in dealing with structuring this new contract and I am, you know, I love working with you, Joe, even though I have a couple of months left. And I think you deserve everything and you, you're doing a tremendous job in this town. And you are very commended throughout the county. I travel all throughout Bucks and even surrounding counties and people are quick to say how awesome of a police chief we have. So thank you for everything you've been doing. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, because as I mentioned, my time here is coming up over the next couple of months, it is getting into budget season. So I don't think it's fair if I, along with the police chief or, you know, myself, does the budget and presents it to this council. I don't believe that I should present something that someone else is going to have to inherit. So I am recommending to the council and the borough manager, excuse me, to get the incoming mayor to structure his own budget and present it to this council because that's something he's going to have to inherit and I shouldn't do that for him only because of the fact that I don't want someone to say like, well, I would have done X, Y and Z next year. So I recommend to you, you being all council and the manager, to send him, you know, what he needs or get him the information and invite him to a meeting to present his future budget.
Great idea, Ray.
Good idea.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. So Jim, we'll get together this week or next week and we'll get everything he needs to prepare his own budget for this council. Does anybody have anything else?
No.
Jeff, you have anything?
The council met an executive session for about 45 minutes prior to the meeting to discuss some personnel matters, which are in some respects already on the agenda, but that was extended the conversations.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for the record, what I think I heard from an employee who got hurt on the job about four years ago, that one of the former employees used to drink on the job or used to drive around town drunk or drinking. That employee has not been an employee of the borough for about two years now. So I don't want the public to think that any of our existing employees are driving around town drinking. And I would encourage the public or anybody, if they see any borough employee driving drunk or whatever, please call 911 and I'm sure the police will be there. But I just want to make sure that, I think I was hearing that a former employee who left here two years ago was being, you know, besmirched here tonight as drinking on the job, but there's no current employees drinking on the job, as I understand what was, you know, stated here to see. Okay, so that ends everything. We go into our regular meeting. I need a motion, I guess on item one.
President, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for September 8th, 2025, the treasurer's report for August 2025, the police chief's report for August and September of 2025, fire chief's report for September of 2025, the inspection report for September of 2025, the public works report for September of 2025, the HARB report for September 29th, 2025, and the Gilmore report dated October 2025 for September 2025 report.
Second, second by Mr. Figaro, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve hiring Christopher Chan as a part-time police officer.
Second by Mr. Cussell, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the redevelopment authority to proceed with the acquisition of blighted property known as 1230 Pine Grove Street, TMP number four dash zero two two dash zero five two in the amount of $35,000.
Second by Mrs. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the termination of employment of Jose Rosado and that he retired on a disability pension pursuant to the Bristol Borough Non-Uniform Pension Plan.
Second by Mrs. Cullen, questions or comments?
I, I would just like to comment that obviously feel very strongly for Jose, the human being and whatever it is that he is dealing with on a physical and mental level. I know from my union work and being in a union myself, that when people are in that position, that a disability retirement is actually helpful. So I hope that that is the case in this situation.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number six.
Number six. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve employment contracts for our chief, Joseph Moore.
Second by Mr. Cottrell, chief, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Karen Sylvester for the police secretary position per tier two union contract.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Figueroa, questions or comments? The only thing I'd like to comment on this hire is that she's coming into our police department as a secretary, and she could sit down tomorrow and she doesn't need to be trained. She does everything that this Borough already does, she's coming from, I guess we could say right now, she's coming from Tullytown, and Tullytown has the same exact systems, computer systems, everything that we have. So she went from part-time to full-time, she's going to be a, a true asset to the police department, so.
Definitely will be.
We really got lucky with this hire. And that was the chief's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve revised 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Uniform Pension Plan, $688,358.96.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? So just so everybody knows, that's the minimum obligation to meet that pension plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised 2026 Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Non-Uniform Pension Plan in the amount of $491,243.43.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Before we adjourn, I got one more thing. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Ms. Collins, second by Ms. Rodriguez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting adjourned.